All right, we're recording. And live.
Excellent. We'll just give, uh, give it a moment here to let folks start to trickle in. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Newbury Report, City of Newbury Report zoning Board of Appeals for the hearing of April 12th. It's the appointed hour, 7:00 PM. And as we kind of give it a few minutes to let folks begin to trickle into the, to the Zoom meeting, I'm going to take a quick moment and go through some introductions, let everyone know who, uh, who's here this evening. We'll go through some board preliminaries and then I will call the roll, establish that we have a quorum. Uh, we do have one minor modification request and then we'll get into the public hearings of which we have one, um, request for continuance on 35 High Street. We'll do that one first. In case anyone's here, uh, to participate, uh, in connection with that, they'll have the opportunity to not have to wait around. So, um, without, uh, without further ado, I'll just take a moment and introduce members of the board this evening. We do have one member, Mr. Stephen Delaw, who is, uh, absent, uh, but I will begin by introducing our board. Um, we have, uh, Mr. Mark Moore, Vice Chair. We have Ken Swanton, Secretary, uh, oh, I'm sorry, it's Ken Swanton, Member, Walter Bud Shannon, Member, and Gregory Bennet, Associate Member. Um, also this evening in attendance, of course, we have, uh, Mr. Andy Port, our, um, our zoning, I'm sorry, our, uh, Planning Director, as well as Caitlin Sullivan, our City Planner. Uh, also in attendance this evening is Ms. Gretchen Joy, our Keeper of the Record. Um, and, uh, with that, I'll just note that for purposes of all the hearings this evening, since we have one member absent, Mr. Bennet will be our voting Member, um, as, uh, as alternate. And so the five voting Members this evening will be, Mark Moore, myself, Bud Shannon, Ken Swanton, and Greg Bennet. So all of the Members of the ZBA who are here will also be the legal voting Members. And with that, I'm going to call the roll, establish a quorum and get right into the, uh, the business of this evening. So calling the roll, Members of the ZBA, please respond with, uh, either present or here. Um, Mr. Mark Moore.
Present.
Mr. Stephen Delaw is absent. Mr. Ken Swanton.
Here.
Mr. Walter Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Gregory Bennet.
Here.
And Rob Champetti, I am here as well. That's, uh, six, one, two, three, four, sorry, five, uh, in attendance. That establishes a quorum. So we have the legal ability to proceed with this evening's hearing. So, um, before we get into the minor modification, I'll just take a quick moment, just in case there's anyone logged on this evening who isn't familiar with how the zoning Board of Appeals or really any Zoom online version of a, a city public hearing works. Um, I will, uh, begin every, every, um, hearing by reading the legal, the legal notice, which is essentially the legal notice by applicant name, uh, applicant representative, as well as the address, and then a brief description of what the applicant seeks in terms of relief, whether it's a variance, whether it's a special permit, special permit for non-conformities, et cetera. And then a very brief description pulled right out of the legal notice that was published, uh, online, as well as in the newspaper, describing essentially, uh, what the applicant seeks to do and just very, um, you know, very, um, narrative and descriptive words, so that even if you haven't seen the legal notice or know what a legal notice is, you'll still have an understanding, uh, as to what the applicant seeks to do. After we read the public notice, we then go to the presentation. Uh, the applicant or their representative will present, uh, their request to the board members. They will do that through themselves, through their own description, through, uh, the use of their experts or professionals and, uh, present materials and any materials that are being presented. Uh, Ms. Sullivan, our City Planner, uh, will be posting up on the Zoom screen, so she will be sharing that screen. So anything that we're seeing that's being referenced, you'll, and Members of the, uh, of the public in attendance will see it as well, uh, just at the same time we see it. All of this material is also online at the City of Newbury Report's website. If you click on the ZBA link, you will get, uh, a list of each application and click on any application, you'll be able to open up all of the materials that we have, all the materials that are being referenced or have been filed. So everything is out there to be viewed sort of in real time as we, uh, go through each application. After the presentation's completed, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. We then go to the public comment section. Public comment is when we, um, basically open it up to any member of the, uh, of the audience who wishes to just simply raise their hand, um, and, uh, and be heard. So if you raise your hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen, uh, we will recognize you by name or by telephone number if you're calling in. And then we will unmute your mic and invite you to just give your name and address for Ms. Joy to record in the minutes, uh, and then just speak your mind. We ask that everyone kindly just keep your comments to within about two minutes. We have discretion and we, you know, we often give a little more time as needed, but just in the interest of time, we ask everyone to kindly just govern your remarks in and around that two-minute mark so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. And don't feel as though you need to speak for or against. Uh, we, we don't ask folks to say that, though you're welcome to. I will just recognize one at a time as hands get raised and you can simply speak your mind. Feel free to say whether you're for or against, of course, but don't feel like you have to come in at a certain vertical of either the for, uh, or the against, uh, timeline. So once we finish, uh, public comment and we've gone through everyone who wishes to be heard, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. And we go to questions from the board. Questions from the board are just simply Members of the ZBA, one at a time. I will invite to ask questions of, uh, the applicant or the applicant's representative. And oftentimes, Members of the public who have voiced questions or voiced public comment in the form of a question, rest assured, while the board can't answer your question in real time, we will certainly, we're listening to those questions and you will hear invariably a board member asked very close to what you asked as a question in the form of a question from the board member. So that's how that material is, is trickles its way into the process. Uh, but please understand that we mean no disrespect if we're not addressing in response, an answer to a question posed. You may still pose the question, but just know that we won't, we can't answer it in that format. But it will, you, you will see that material come back in the questions from the board section. Uh, once we finish with questions from the board, we close that portion of the public hearing and go into deliberations. Deliberations are when the ZBA essentially thinks out loud and everyone gets to essentially listen as we toil with the legal criteria of the application, um, that has to be met by the applicant, whether or not it's been met, whether we have additional questions, uh, and we, um, uh, will ultimately refine that deliberation down to, uh, actual findings where we make conclusions or findings. And, um, then we will complete those deliberations. Once completed and every board member has spoken, uh, I will then, um, ask, uh, for a motion, a motion to approve. And essentially in the adaptive rules of Roberts Rules of Procedure, we, which we follow, I will ask any member of the ZBA to, uh, to proffer a motion, which will always come in as a motion to approve. So it's a motion in the affirmative, but please understand that that doesn't mean that board member, uh, plans to support the application or is, uh, planning to vote, uh, to approve the application. It's merely the legal format to get that motion on the floor. It's then seconded by another board member. Once it's made and seconded, uh, we then will call the roll. And in order for the application to be successful, at least four Members of the ZBA must vote in the affirmative. If the, um, vote is four or better in the affirmative, the eyes have it, that motion carries and that application's approved. So, um, that's really the flow of how the board, uh, business goes. And just for those that might not be familiar, I wanted everyone to know in advance what to expect. So, uh, with that, we will now go into our, uh, the beginning of our, um, meeting this evening and we'll start with minor modification request. Uh, and we have before us a minor modification request on 74th Story Avenue. Um, and 74th Story Avenue, I believe, uh, we have John Peterson, who will be presenting on behalf of the application. Mr. Peterson, uh, you have the floor, sir.
Hey, Rob, how you doing? Can you hear me?
Yes, we, we can hear you, John.
Yeah, good. Uh, how you doing? I'm just, um, so I'm here, we're proposing to, uh, modify a freestanding sign currently at 74th Story Ave. Currently, that is owned by Clipper Car Wash. They are selling the business to Washville. So we're just looking to change the panel out and, um, you know, change the business name to Washville. And underneath also have another sign that reads, uh, Free Vax for, Free Vacuums for the, uh, customers that go there. There'll be no change to any of the poles or the brackets that it's connected to. Um, just the panels itself will be changed out and that's all.
Okay. Uh, any lighting changes? But what, what do we have here?
Uh, no lighting changes. There's a light, I don't know if you can see that on the sign. There's currently a light in front of it. There's a few lights down on the ground there that just shine on it. That's all. Those will, those will remain there.
Okay. Uh, very good. Uh, was there anything else you wanted to present before we kind of, um, we, we kind of get into the, the next phase? See if there's any questions and such.
Well, no, I think that's pretty much it. Pretty self-explanatory, yeah.
All right. Very good. Well, uh, then, uh, thank you, Mr. Peterson. We'll, um, we will now just close that portion of the, uh, minor modification presentation. And, uh, we will go to, um, questions from the, uh, from the board and, uh, see if there's any thoughts or questions. One of the first determinations we need to make is whether we all, uh, agree that the request is minor in nature and then, uh, we can proceed with, uh, thoughts and a vote. So we'll start with, uh, Mr. Moore.
I don't have any questions, Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Um, Mr. Swanton.
Um, hi there. Yeah, I went by there and the, the granite posts are there. So you're basically just putting the signs back between the existing granite posts. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. Thanks. That's my only question.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Shannon.
Uh, just, uh, one or two questions. Um, so the existing sign was an oval as shown in the picture and the new sign is a rectangle with a, with a new secondary sign. It says Free, Free Vax. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the secondary sign is new and that'll have new brackets?
Uh, down below there will, yes.
Okay. And then what's the square footage of the existing sign that says Clipper Car Wash versus the new signs that'll say Washville and Free Vax? Do you know the square footage?
The former is about 93 inches. You know, wide and about it would take probably 31. Sorry, sorry, about 50 inches, uh, high.
So the Washville sign is 50 inches high?
The Clipper. The Clipper.
Oh, the existing Clipper. 50 by, 50 by 91 and it, and it's an oval.
Correct. And this one kind of has that oval shape too on the top there that comes around the circle there.
Oh, that's part of the sign, the, um, the thing that's, uh, A pointing to it?
Uh, yes. Yeah. So if you look to the right there on the, uh, proposed, you can see that white portion of it that
Yeah, yeah. I see it now. Yeah. All right. So it looks like the, the two signs together are slightly bigger than the existing Clipper.
Yeah, um, I, I don't have a existing, um, square footage, but this one, you know, altogether would be about 41 square feet.
Okay. All right. Thank you. No other questions, Chair. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, thank you, Mr. Shannon and, uh, Mr. Bennet.
I have no questions. I guess just one, they're currently, presently is lighting, uh, illuminating the sign? Is that the case?
Yeah, just those.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, go ahead. Uh, Mr. Peterson, if you could add, you, you could answer that.
I was gonna say, it's just those two lights they have on the ground there that shine up on them.
Right. You're not adding any lighting?
No, no lighting added.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. And Mr. Bennet, I, the only comment I have, um, not really a question, but, uh, I, I remember permitting this sign originally. I don't know how many years ago. Um, and when I, if I recall, I, I believe we permitted it with, there was a rider below it. It, it's since been removed. And I believe it said to open 24 hours or 24 hours. If you look at the photo under existing, you can still see that, you can still see the aluminum bracket, um, for the bottom. It's to the right of materials. Um, so I, I kind of, and I just offer this for the board members, um, my fellow board members. It seems like, you know, what, what was originally there though had since been removed, did include a principal sign and then a, a smaller rider down below, which for whatever reason, it looks like they removed it at some point. I, I don't know when, but I, I do remember that. So, um, any, um, any other questions from, uh, from Members of the ZBA before we close off and all right, um, we can now just move into our deliberations on, uh, finding of, uh, whether or not the, uh, request is in fact minor by our discretionary view in terms of what seeks to be done and, and then we can move to a vote. Why don't we just start with thoughts and, uh, quickly and, and we can, uh, we can move, uh, move through a, a vote on the minor modification. Mr. Moore.
Thank you. As you said, Mr. Chairman, when I looked at this and, and I think it was the last photo of the, uh, of the package shows the original sign, I think that you referenced, which had a rider beneath it. So it, it's, um, you gotta change the name of the place, change ownership. And since it did have a secondary sign, I don't see this, and it's fitting within the post. There's no change in lighting. Um, I don't see this as, as being substantive changes at all to what was permitted, uh, prior. So I can support it. As a minor mod.
Uh, Mr. Swanton?
I, I think Mr. Moore said it well. I can concur with my colleague and I too can support this.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Shannon.
I agree. I would consider this very minor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bennet.
I agree.
Thank you. Uh, I agree as well. Uh, do we have a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion, uh, to deem, um, modification to, uh, 74th Story Ave, 2005 dash zero three seven, uh, minor.
Second, can, second, Ken Swanton.
All right. Thank you. Motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Swanton. Um, on the finding that, uh, the application is minor and, uh, and a motion to approve it has been made and seconded, calling the roll on the minor modification. Uh, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Uh, and Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, motion carries and the minor mod, uh, is approved. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Peterson and good luck.
Thank you, Members of the Board. Appreciate it.
All right. Uh, moving now into our public hearings, we'll begin, um, first with just slightly out of order, um, in the interest of just economy. Uh, we have a request, uh, on the application of 35th High Street for further continuance. Uh, this is the application of, uh, of, uh, of, Yvonne Alley and Noel Ochman on 35th High Street. A, um, a request for a, um, variance. Is that a variance? No, it's a special permit to construct an elevated pool deck with, uh, with wall fence below it, below extending a non-conforming side yard setback. Uh, the applicants have requested a continuance to May 10th. Uh, I don't believe there's anyone here, though, correct me if I'm wrong, if there's, um, no, I don't believe there's anyone here on behalf of 35. So we can just proceed on the, the request. Um, do we have a motion to approve the applicant's request to continue to May 10?
Go move, Mr. Moore.
Second, Mr. Shagman.
Thank you. Uh, motions made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Shagman on the motion to continue 35th High Street to May 10th, calling the roll. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And, uh, Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries and 35th High Streets continue to five, the hearing of five, 10, 22. Thank you. Um, okay, just backing up to the first, uh, public hearing. This is the matter of Winward Shaw LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC on the application address of 44, 46 Beacon Avenue. Uh, this is a variance request to construct a pool and pool house within setbacks requiring a dimensional variance. Uh, this matter was also continued to this evening from the hearing of March 22nd. And, uh, with that, we will, um, hear from the applicant, uh, and I believe Attorney Lisa Mead, uh, will be speaking on behalf of the applicant, George Hazelton. Um, Attorney Mead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and Members of the Board. Uh, good evening. And, uh, with me this evening is George Hazelton of Winward Shaw. Um, and as the, uh, Chair indicated, we, um, have continued this since March 22nd, but actually, uh, the last time you saw my colleague, um, on this application was a little over a month ago. So, um, we're glad to be back, uh, in front of the board. Um, as a reminder, uh, this application is for a variance to install a pool in the, uh, in various setbacks, uh, in addition to the construction of a, a pool house, um, and a fence that is over four feet tall in the front yard setback. If you could go to the first, uh, slide, please. So, um, when the board, uh, last considered this request, um, as I said, you heard from my colleague about the need uh, to have a couple of these variances, um, mostly deemed to, uh, as a result of the shape of the lot and the location of a number of mature trees along the street line on the lot. Um, as I'm going to show you in a minute in the site plan, um, you might recall, uh, because of the nature of the corner lot and its rounded edges and then the odd shape and the remainder of the lot, the setbacks actually overlap one another. Um, and so it's pretty next to impossible. In fact, it is next to impossible to actually use the side yard for any structure. Um, and therefore, um, there's a hardship in our opinion related to, um, the shape of the lot. So after the first meeting, however, uh, the board had some comments and concerns relative to the size of the pool house. Um, uh, the applicant went back and spoke with the owners of the property, um, and they have now reduced the, the pool house. It was, um, it was the maximum 22 by 24, um, was actually 35 by 15, but the same square footage. It's been reduced to 24 by 15, uh, and no longer needs the variance, uh, for the side yard. Um, and is slightly in, uh, the front yard setback by 4.5 feet. So it's still, it's 21.5 feet away from the front yard and we'll talk about that in a minute. Um, additionally, um, it was pointed out by the zoning code, um, enforcement officer, who I believe was in attendance at that meeting, uh, that, um, we neglected to add, uh, the variance for the fence, which is six feet in the front yard setback. Um, Section 6F of the ordinance requires that if you have a fence within the front yard setback, it can't be, uh, more than four feet tall. And so we're going to talk a little bit about that. Um, given the location of the pool and the pool house, uh, and how close everything is to the street and how wide the street is there, essentially, uh, the privacy and safety, uh, requires a, a six-foot tall fence. And uh, we request the board, look at that variance, um, and the location of the fence. So if you could go to, uh, the next slide, please. So with this, um, you can see, um, the reduction in the size of the pool house. Um, and again, uh, notably, you can see the overlapping of the, um, setbacks in that side of the yard. Um, so the pool house now meets the requirements of, um, an accessory structure where it was larger than an accessory structure previously. And it meets the setbacks on the side in the rear yard. And you can see that that front corner, um, is a little bit over the front yard setback at 21.5 where 25 is required. Um, additionally, we've put the fence on the plan, um, which was missing before. And you can see the fence run along in front of the trees, um, because behind the trees, they would be too close to the pool and they would interfere with the trees. In fact, probably have to take some of the trees down. Um, so the request is to allow the, the fence at six feet to be in the, um, front yard setback. Um, so if you can go to the next slide, please. Again, here's a little bit, a closer view that shows all of the dimensions, um, more clearly, um, the layout of the pool house and, uh, proposed pool along with the landscaping and the trees and the proposed fence. Um, we believe the applicant has showed that the shape of the property is highly unique. Um, and it's not a shape that the applicant created. In fact, there are two lots here that merged by operation of law under zoning. Um, it's also a corner lot and it has very odd shaped curved front yard. Um, if it weren't for a corner lot, um, with five sides, um, then we, and it would be more square. Uh, it'd be more likely that we could meet the, all of the setback requirements as required. Again, um, the shape of the lot is requiring, because of the overlap setbacks on this portion of the lot, is essentially rendering it unusable, but for getting a variance in order to, um, install a structure in that section of the, of the property. Um, again, the odd node on that corner makes it an odd shaped lot as it goes out to a T or towards South Pond Street. Um, we further believe that, um, because of the hardship, the shape of the lot, um, and I would consider the mature trees being a bit of a hardship as well, because we're trying to save those, um, that we can't make use of the property, uh, in accordance with the ordinance. Uh, we don't believe it derogates from the intent and purpose of the ordinance. It certainly maintains the safety, um, of the, of the area and of the pool. Um, it is far as ways practicable, um, from the, from the street, um, the, both the pool house and the pool, um, and the side yards. You note the pool, there's a balance between the back corner at five and a half feet and the front at that nine-foot setback. Um, so we're trying to kind of balance all the, the various points of this odd shape on this part of the property. It continues to preserve light and air and promote health and safety. There's no, certainly no derogation in that, those portions of the purpose of the ordinance. And certainly there's no detrimental impact, um, on the neighborhood. Um, one of the biggest concerns for the neighbors, of course, uh, not surprisingly, is the retention of these trees along the street line. Um, and those, of course, will be retained. Um, also, the improvement of this lot, um, prior to the reconstruction, it was really not anything. I don't think anybody in the neighborhood enjoyed looking at, um, and it will be much improved and a compliment to all of the neighbors. Uh, indeed, you should have received five letters of support. Um, previously, uh, those neighbors still have letters of support on file and they are from all of the abutters as well as, uh, folks who live across the street on Beacon Street. So with that, we hope that, uh, we address the concerns of the board by reducing the size of the pool house to be smaller than what an accessory structure is permitted to be. And if you could go to the next slide, um, Caitlin. Again, here's just the elevation of the pool house that faces, uh, the pool. So you can see the construction of it. And the next slide, please. Um, so our variance requests are, um, for the pool to be eight feet in the front yard setback where 25 is required, five and a half in the side yard where six is required. The pool house to encroach slightly onto the front yard by 4.5 feet and a fence that is six feet tall within the front yard setback. Um, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, from the board.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Mead. Um, we will close that portion of the public hearing and go to public comment. And just to remind everyone, um, you'll see a slide up right now, which is our instructions for public comment. Uh, and, um, if you, uh, have just recently logged on, uh, we just ask that you raise your hand. And we will recognize anyone who wishes to be heard by name or by telephone number. And then we just ask you to give your name and address so that you can be recognized. Um, looks like Francis Kaplan, um, if you want to go ahead and unmute your mic, um, you have the floor.
Yes. Hello. Um, my name is Francis Kaplan. I'm here with my husband, Robert, and we live on South Pond. So we would be across the street looking at the side, um, fence. And I want to say that, um, we were, we were, um, very, very pleased with the construction crews. Um, albeit it, it, you know, it did take a long time, but they were always, um, mindful of throwing away, you know, trash. Um, there was no littering in the street, um, respectful and, um, in, in that sense, I have, I have only, um, positive, um, positive regard for the crews that worked on the house. Um, my husband, my, oh, and also I just want to commend, um, um, the project manager, um, and the company, Winward Shaw, because I was very, very concerned about, um, the possible loss of the trees from an environmental perspective as well as an aesthetic perspective. And, um, I was, um, very pleased that the comment was taken to heart and, um, ruled to, to keep the trees. This is my husband, Robert.
I agree. Uh, I agree with Fran. It, they've, they've been a pleasure to, uh, to watch the construction across the street and it hasn't been a problem whatsoever. And having the, 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 the pool and the pool house would not be a problem at all for us visually and keeping the trees would be wonderful. So I just wanted to, uh, voice that. I think we have the most direct view of, of that particular area that you're, you're talking about. Uh, we're done.
Very good. Uh, well, thank you, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Kaplan for your comments and, um, uh, seeing no further hands. Uh, I will close that portion of the public hearing and we'll go to questions from the board, uh, beginning with Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Attorney Mead, I just have, I have one question on the, um, the trees which are, are going to be kept. And I just wanted to compare three with two. So slide three first. Um, shows the trees behind the tree line or behind the fence line, whereas four shows it kind of like right on the fence line. So I, I'm just trying to, to square. I, I have, I didn't go by today, but I, I know the trees are there and I'm just trying to square where the fence needs to be on the street versus behind the trees. And the two diagrams are a little bit different. The two diagrams are a little bit different. I just wonder if you could explain. Why one has trees in a different spot than the other.
Sure, Caitlin, if you could go to the. Number four, I just want to see something. Yeah, so I think that the difference is that one is at an actual survey with a location of the fence and the other is a. Is this is more of a sketch. So the the fence is going to go and you see the the canopy of the trees here more. Obviously, they're much bigger than they appear on the 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 plan itself. So this is a sketch plan. It's not a survey, even though it's taken off the survey, of course. But the accurate drawing about the trees, excuse me, the fences on the survey and it will be located. Between the street and the trees so that the trees are the inside of the fence and not damaged by. The. Not damaged by the. The fence installation.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I recall this very well from last time I walked by here, you know, frequently. I appreciate the changes you've made. Actually, I don't have any questions, so I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chair. I I guess I just have one comment clarification and again, I appreciate the. The change in the pool house. I think most of the board. Took issue with with its very large size with the previous meeting. But one of the dimensions given was that the pool house is twenty-one and a half feet from the. I guess technically the front yard setback. Which is only three and a half feet inside the twenty-five foot requirement, just just as a clarification, not four and a half. So it's, you know, it's just a little over ten percent. It just just a. It's just a comment. I think it's it's acceptable. And I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shagnan, and never let a lawyer do math.
Well said.
All right, and Mr. Beck.
Yeah, I I just would like you. Attorney me to talk to me a little bit about the selection of a six foot versus a four foot fence.
Sure, I I think that it mostly has to do with privacy and and safety, certainly for the pool. You know, the pool is right there. If you've been down the street, it's a fairly wide street. And then their pool house is back there, so they're looking for. The six foot fence to, you know, to make sure that there is some privacy back there, but also it's a, you know, it's a safety issue. While, you know, there would be probably acceptable to have a four foot fence around a pool. I would say by and large, most people don't construct a pool without a six foot fence. Because the possibility, it's easier to crawl over a four foot than it is a six foot.
Yeah, I understand that. How how long does the fence run there on the? I guess on the front. Lot there's side.
Sure, Caitlin, for most accurate view, if you could go to the site plan, please. So the fence comes up to meet the that tree that's in the front at the proposed gate and it goes all the way to the corner. Right, doesn't you see that back up the top there and then goes around?
Yeah, I see that. I'm just curious, how long is that stretch of fence?
Oh, so that says. Seven, it's so, yeah, I can't tell you exactly.
Around give or take seven feet, I guess.
Right.
I guess this is just my own aesthetic reaction to. Seventy foot, six seventy foot long, six foot solid fence, but. I have no questions. Beyond that.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I don't have any further questions either. I think they've all been. Asked and answered, so I'll close that portion of the public hearing and we'll go into deliberations. Beginning and in deliberating, we have to deliberate, of course, around the. Criteria for a variance which is being sought by the applicant to construct the pool. Starting with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think from the prior meeting has been has been stated by. Probably all the colleagues. The issue that stood out to us most after looking at the variances required to. With this uniquely shaped lot, I think we all agreed upon, it was certainly unique. Was the fact that the pool house was so large, so having that addressed. And cut down to only encroaching a tiny bit, I know was appreciated by me and I think by all. So. That being said. The only other issue to deal with for me was the variance. For fence height and I don't think it's unreasonable when you have a pool that close. To the street and you're trying to save trees to to want to go to six feet, so. I agree with Mr. Bennet that maybe it's not aesthetically as pleasing, but if the pool wasn't as close, maybe it wouldn't need to be. As immediately high, so. When I look at the variance request for the the pool, the the pool house and and the fence height. I I can certainly support this. I think, you know, as we've all agreed, the conditions. Are unique to the applicant's lot. That's clearly the case. Having a pool and a pool house that. Conforms with most of the setbacks, given the unique shape of a lot, it's only encroaching a tiny bit. It's. It's a reasonable use for the lot. No doubt. Nothing the the owner has done, you know, caused us to to occur, and I don't think it's a special privilege to. To have a privacy fence a little higher when a when a pool and a pool house is as close to. A street as this one is, so for all those reasons, I can support the variances. Asked for.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore and Mr. Swanton.
I think Mr. Moore said it quite well. I mean, this is clearly an unusual shaped lot down this end of it. And I too had a problem with the size of the pool house as it was originally proposed, but this is a. A big improvement and. Around a slight. Varyance now required for the size of it. Given the shape of the lot, that slight variance is okay. So I can support this proposal.
Very good. Mr. Chang.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with my colleagues and again, kudos to the applicant for shrinking the pool house and. Making it a little bit easier decision with that front yard setback being, you know, a much, much smaller change. And again, due to the shape of the lot, you know, I I think this obviously fits. The criteria for us to to go ahead and. To allow a variance for the pool and the pool house, so I can support this application.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shannon and Mr. Bennet. What say you, sir?
Yeah, I I can. I guess. I always look at variances with a little more critical eye and more discerning eye, I guess, and I think we all do. And I guess my point of departure, of course, is that we have to find something called a. This would be a sub quote substantial hardship, which I view as a high burden and. As I think about that, I wonder if denial of a pool and a pool house. Constitutes a substantial hardship, however. I think we're informed relative to that finding by the. Four criteria that we have to tick through. To determine whether a variance is. Request has been met here. And I do find that those four criteria have been met, so. With respect to the pool house and the pool, I I. Can find that the request for variance is 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 well founded and meets the zoning ordinance. And I commend the design of this and particularly as my colleagues have said the. Reduction in the the size of the pool house, so. I certainly can support and will support the motion to grant the variance for the pool and pool house. I I can't make the same finding with respect to the fence. For the reasons I've stated, it's a matter of aesthetics and I may. I guess I have to chew on that as as a as a as a motion is 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 made, however. It strikes me that 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 type of fence, six feet with. A solid fenced attracts from. The neighborhood, the road, the and the surroundings, and I I have, I'm having a hard time accepting that as an approach here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bennet. I I too, I guess I agree with most of most of my colleagues. I feel that. Certainly, I, you know, I don't love the length of the solid stockade fence. Or it's height in some of the same ways that Mr. Bennet is concerned, but I I can get. I think overall the the reduction of the pool house is good. It's a good. Value improvement to the project and. I feel the applicants met their burden, at least in. My read of it, so I, which is one voting member, feel like I can support it as well. So. Unless there are any further deliberations, I will close the deliberations portion of the public hearing. And I'll ask a member of the ZBA for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve a variance for forty-four, forty-six Beacon Avenue that's a VAR dash twenty-two dash one.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Moore's motions made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Swanton on the motion to approve. The variance on the application for forty-four, forty-six Beacon Avenue. Calling the roll, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that is five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries and the variance application is approved. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, members of the board. Thank you.
All right, moving to the the next application. In the public hearings this evening, this is the application of Michael and Michelle Woo, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa. LLC on the application at eleven Flora Street. This is a request to construct. In addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure above a primary and existing deck, and this is a. Special permit for non-conformities and we will hear from attorney Lisa Mead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Costa, thirty Green Street in Newport, on behalf of Michael and Michelle Ewick. Like Buick, as Mr. Ewick says. And with me also this evening is Charles Hoyt, who is the architect on the project. As the chair indicated, we're here for a special permit for non-conformities. If you could go to the next slide, please. The property is located eleven Flora Street on Plum Island. It is in the AgCon district and the Plum Island overlay district. Michelle and Michael wish to remove existing decks. And construct a two-story addition in the same footprint as the existing first floor deck. This is a single-family home on the property. The lot is larger than most of the Plum Island lots. It the house was constructed around nineteen eighty-two. Although there was a prior structure there that existed as early as nineteen fifty-two and the lot is pre-existing non-conforming. It includes a hundred seventy-eight feet of frontage where under the AgCon district, three hundred feet is required for a single-family home. It includes fourteen thousand four hundred fifty-one square feet of area. Where in the AgCon district, four hundred thousand square feet is required. The front yard setback is twenty-eight point four, where fifty is required. And the rear yard setback is eleven five, where fifty feet is required. Otherwise, the lot conforms to the to the ordinance. So the structure, however, is also three stories and it will remain three stories. That's non-conforming under the ordinance. And for the board's information, the FAR is currently fifteen percent. And will be eighteen point five percent. After and will still remain conforming. If you could go to the next slide, please. As I noted, that's three stories. It will continue to be three stories where actually the addition doesn't go up to the third story. And there is a currently a three bedrooms and there will be three bedrooms following the proposed renovation. As well. So. The applicant proposes to work within the existing footprint of the existing first floor deck and while enclosing it on the first floor and replicating that on the second floor. In that same footprint, it does intensify the rear yard setback, which is eleven point nine in an upward extension. The applicant will be adding also a first and second floor deck on the south side. Of this new addition, however, that will be fully compliant. With the zoning ordinance setback requirements on that side. The applicant is going to be adding a total of five hundred and twelve square feet of living space between the first and second floor. Which will keep it. Under the FAR. At eighteen point six percent. So while there is a slight increase in the FAR, it is certainly well below the twenty-five percent. Maximum. No other existing compliant require dimensional requirements are intensified. Certainly, the compliant lot coverage increases, but it's not exceeding the required twenty percent. With that, if you could go to the next slide. So here is, so Millennium Engineering is the engineer on this site. And they, I'm going to talk a little bit about Conservation Commission in a minute. But as you can see on the left-hand side of your screen is the existing conditions. You can see it's a double lot. The basin is out in front of this lot to the right. You can see the existing decks on the end of the house. And the rear yard setback at eleven point five. That's where that upward extension is going to be when. Those decks become solid. Additions on the moving in an upward manner. On the right-hand side, you can see the proposed conditions and there you have the addition, which is in the same footprint as the current first floor deck. And then you can see the new deck which is added out on the side, which would be towards the right or towards Flora Street. If you could go to the next slide, please. And I think I'm going to turn this over to Charles Hoyt, because he has great drawings that are easy to see the changes and I'll let him go through those with you.
Hello, this is Charles Hoyt. Good evening, everybody. I was the I had the honor of being the designer. For the USX and. Starting with the ground floor. The proposed first floor. We are taking an existing sixteen by sixteen deck and we are removing it and putting in a. A sixteen by sixteen sunroom. With an eight by six deck off to the side facing Flora. I think it's going to be a very sunny and interesting room. It. I think it will fit well in in the neighborhood. I think the also the 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 mode of structure, we're using steel piles, which is the least obtrusive. Form of foundation that I think we could use for this particular project, given the sensitivity of the site. The second floor. We are putting a living room off the existing kitchen, living space. The kitchen, we are going to be renovating. It's a dated kitchen there. They're happy to see some some new appliances, new cabinets. And we're going to be putting some new windows in. Top floor, third floor, we are putting a deck off the roof part of the second floor. Providing a ten by sixteen deck off the primary bedroom. And I think that's that sums up the the modest renovations that we plan on doing for this particular project.
Can you go to the next slide, please, Caitlin? So as you can see, here's the existing right side elevation. So this is a side that faces Flora Street and as Charles said, you can see that open deck. On the right side, both on the first floor and second floor. And then the smaller deck on the top of the second floor. That sits on the flat roof. Next slide, please. And again, this is the proposed left elevation. This is the elevation that is non-conforming, so this is where your upward extension is. Obviously, it's the same size as the other. And next slide. And this is the front elevation that doesn't change at all that faces. As you come down Flora Street. And the next slide, please. And I just wanted to give you an idea of where this all sits. So here's the end of Flora Street. And you can see it's right into the basin. There's nothing in front of it. There's really not much to the right-hand side of it. And certainly the addition doesn't change any views. Of any of the of the neighbors. Under section eleven G four of the Plum Island overlay district. The board needs to decide whether the alteration or reconstruction or extension. Or change the pre-existing non-conforming property. Is substantially more detrimental to either the neighborhood or the Plum Island overlay district. Here, the proposed addition is certainly, we believe, not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure. On the pile generally, there is that upward intensification of the rear yard setback. Um, but otherwise, there are no new non-conformities which are created. The addition, uh, the additional square footage. Um, results in five hundred and twelve square feet, um, but keeps the, uh, proposed addition under the required twenty-five percent F A R. Um, by, um, over six percent. Um, the proposed living space is already on top of an existing sixteen by sixteen footprint. Um, that previously existed. Um, as Charles said, this is going to be new space for a sunroom and a living room. Um, on both floors and the number of bedrooms will continue to stay the same. Uh, the lock coverage, uh, remains compliant, increasing by only point, uh, three percent from ten point three to ten point six percent. Uh, there's minimal impact on the neighborhood or the purpose and intent of the pyod here. The footprint of the structure is literally already in place, as I noted. Uh, and it's going to be replaced with, um, steel piles, as Charles indicated. Um, and as minimally, minimally intrusive method as possible. Uh, the replacement will be done in accordance with the Conservation Commission requirements and any FEMA requirements applicable to the property. I will tell the board, um, that, uh, Matt Spinal from Millennium Engineering has appeared to the Conservation Commission, uh, for this last week. Um, and, um, I'm informed that, um. They did not close it, uh, not because they weren't, um, necessarily ready to approve it. Uh, but because the National Heritage hadn't issued their letter yet. Uh, so they can't close it, um, because they have to wait for the natural heritage letter. Um. We, uh, went through the facts that, uh, some mulch that they don't care for on the island is being removed. Uh, and there's going to be in additional dune grass plantings in the area where the mulch is being removed, which made the, uh, commission happy. And so the commission, uh, will obviously wait in here what this board has to say, but, um, uh, wait and get their letter back from a national heritage, but. Um, they had no concerns, um, as of last meeting, uh, on whether or not to approve, uh, their proposal. Um, so as I noted, uh, there will be addition, uh, the addition will continue to allow for the free flow of sand as it's going to be built up on piles, just like it is today. Um, and I noted earlier that as far as the neighborhood is concerned. Uh, it doesn't really impact any of the surrounding neighbors, given the location of the house on the end of Flora Street. Um, with that, um, we'd request the board, uh, approve the. Uh, proposal for a pre-existing non-conforming structure, a special permit, uh, to add the sixteen by sixteen foot. Two-story addition on the back. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Attorney Mead, um, closing that portion of the public hearing, we'll now go to public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak in connection with the application, just kindly raise your hand. And, uh, we will recognize you to be heard. Um, seeing. So far, no hands, going once. Going twice. All right, um, I don't see any, uh. I don't see any members of the public raising hands to be heard, so I will close the public comment portion of our hearing and go to questions from the board, beginning with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. Um, Attorney Mead, first things first, um, don't sell your math short, you were dead on, on that far.
Yeah.
Comment you made, so. I think batting five hundred so far is a good thing. Um, I only have a, a question on, since. Their proposed changes are taking place over an existing deck. Um, Jessica, and I know, I, I just want to. Have this out there. Uh, the reason for the small lot change, a lot coverage and far change is. Entirely due to the fact that an open deck is being enclosed and will have two stories, is that correct?
Right, so the far change, Mr. Moore, is certainly related to the creation of more living space.
Right.
Um. The lot coverage, if you could go to the site plan. Uh, please. Um, so the slight increase in the lot coverage. Is because of the new deck that's being added on the side, so see. In the existing conditions, you see that little hole between the deck and the main structure.
Yep.
On the existing conditions, so that's now filled in with the whole new deck, you see that? So that's our slight change in lock coverage.
Okay, fair enough. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, um, Mr. Swanton.
Uh, yeah, uh, this is a good slide to have up, um. Could you indicate, is this building? Entirely or partially in the agricultural conservation district? Um, which is it, is it entirely or partially?
So, um. We don't, we have the FEMA zones on here. And I don't know that he has. The, um. The zoning line on here, the lines you see on here are the FEMA zones, uh, Mr. Swanton.
Okay.
Um, so maybe on, if you could go, I'm not sure if we showed it on the my maps or not, um, Caitlin, if you could go to the my maps. Um, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Swanton, and, and this is going to be a total guess, because I don't have it in front of me. I think the AgCon district runs just behind this property, maybe in the middle of the one right behind it. Um, but this end of Flora Street and Gloria Street are in the AgCon district.
So is, does the house itself currently sit in the agricultural conservation district?
Um, yes, sir, I believe it does, I, I don't have that in front of me, but, um, I, um, I, I will tell you that if it didn't, we would. Happily not, um. Have it in the AgCon district, um.
Because wh- when you showed the table. Of the percentages, you had both the agricultural district and the pyod, and I was just confused as to.
Oh.
Whether the house was in the Ag. The more restrictive district or just, you know.
No, so, um, that was, it's a really good point, no, the recent millennium showed both on there, so the board could see. Uh, the comparison between the pyod and the AgCon, and of course, under the pyod, the more restrictive controls, which would be the AgCon.
Right.
Right, so the island is made up of the underlying districts of the R three and the AgCon, and then, of course, the pyod overlays all of it. And if it's in the R three, then the pyod dimensional requirements control. But if it's in the AgCon, the AgCon dimensional requirements control.
All right, so you're basically saying this is in the AgCon.
Um, yes.
You know, generally speaking. You've seen me enough on these things that. You know, we have to decide what's more detrimental to the pyod. And I've been looking closely at the far measurement, and as you point out. This far is only going from point one five to point. One eight six. So it's. Far short of the point two five threshold. So. I don't have any more questions, so thanks very much.
Uh, okay, uh, Mr. Chagrin.
Uh, I don't have any questions, the, everyone else, uh, asked what I had in mind and, uh, I'm, I'm satisfied with the answers, so I've got nothing else, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chagrin, Mr. Bennet.
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, I, uh, I also have no questions, I'm satisfied with what I've heard as well. Uh, so, uh, without any further deliberations, uh. Being requested, I'll close the deliberations portion of the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve from the members of the board.
Should we deliberate?
Oh, I apologize, did we skip deliberations, I thought we went through deliberations.
My, uh, we don't have to, we can.
You know, trying to speed it along, you know, speeding things along. Uh, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to deliberations. Which makes more sense, I think, um, and we'll begin deliberations on the criteria for the variance, uh, being, I'm sorry, for the, um. Uh, the applicant's request, uh, for a special permit for non-conformities, um. On eleven Flora Street, beginning with Mr. Mark Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I find the proposal, um. To be modest, um. Well thought out, doesn't impact the far, it's like, as, as been said. Several times, fifteen to eighteen and a half is not a big deal. Um, adding five hundred and twelve square feet to this, to this home is, is also very modest, using the existing footprint, um, so. With the far and lot coverage, really moving minimally on this oversized lot or oversized for pyod lot, maybe not oversized for. AgCon, and it's a, it's a unique situation there, as was pointed out by Mr. Swan. As presented, I don't see any of these, uh, changes to, uh, the structure in this proposal, uh, can be more substantially detrimental. Uh, to the structure that's there now, uh, either to the neighborhood or the pyod. Um, and as shown, the plan is proposed change will not cause the structure to be within ten feet. Of a lot line or more than two stories or thirty-five feet in height. Um, as is another hurdle for a special permit of an alter, alteration in this area, so for all those reasons, I can support this.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Moore, um, Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I, I mean, I concur, I kind of tip my hand there already, I mean, usually I have an issue on Plum Island, if people want to get very dense. But this one is not, it's a modest addition from point one five to point one eight six, so I can support this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swanton, um, Mr. Chaney.
Uh, I agree with my colleagues, uh, this lot being, uh. You know, substantial in size for, uh, for the pyod, um. It, it keeps the fire low and, uh, and, and like my colleagues, I can support this application.
All right, thanks, thanks, Mr. Shagnan and Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I can support the application, it meets the criteria for the issuance of special permits for non-conformities.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, I, uh, I agree with my colleagues as well, and, uh, I, I too moved by the, just the very modest, um, minimal change in the, um. In the F A R and, uh, that for a Plum Island application, we have zero, um, uh, voice. Opposition from a butters, uh, or even comments to that effect, which is also very rare for any Plum Island application. In my experience, so it, it certainly says something in the absence that it, uh, that it seems modest to others as well, uh, as to us. So, um, I too can support it, I will now close the, uh. Deliberations and we will, uh, now go to a motion and second from the board.
I'll make a motion to approve special permit for non-conformities for eleven Flora Street, that is the N C dash twenty-two dash eight.
Second, Kent Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, on the motion, second by Mr. Swanton, uh, calling the role in the. Motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities on eleven Flora Street, um, calling the role, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, and the motion carries, uh, the application's approved, thank you, uh, Attorney Mead, and good luck, uh, to, uh, you and your clients on eleven Flora Street.
Very much, have a good evening.
You too, um, all right, uh, going to the next application in our public hearing, we have the application of James Hannon, seventeen Goldsmith. Drive, this is an application by Mr. Hannon, um, to construct an open farmer's porch, resulting. In an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming home, and this is a special permit for non-conformities. And presenting on behalf of the applicant is, of course, the advocate, Mr. James Hannon, Mr. Hannon. Uh, you have the floor, if you want to just unmute your mic, um, and, uh, you may feel free to present your application, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen, can you hear me okay?
We can, yes.
All right, perfect, good evening, so I just wanted to thank you guys for having me on the call tonight. And before I go through my submitted, uh, drawings. I just wanted to shout out and thank Jennifer and Diane down at the playing and development office. They have been a huge help and support, uh, throughout the whole process, so I just wanted to thank those two ladies and, uh, appreciate their help. So, uh, going through the first slide. It shows the written documentation to support the application for special permit and non-conformity, so it is a single-family residential home. Uh, the lot currently is a ten thousand square foot lot. But it is zoned for twenty thousand square feet, so currently is in a non-conforming lot already. The front setback of the existing home is twenty-seven, uh, point six feet, uh, which is zoned for thirty feet of a setback. The right side setback is only twelve point five feet. And it is zoned for twenty, uh, twenty feet. So as I said, the home is already, uh, non-conforming as an existing condition. Um, the addition of the front porch would increase the non-conformity of the front setback. The proposed addition of the bedroom suite above the proposed garage. Hall and stairway plus the increasing size of the sunroom on the back of the house. Will increase the floor area by more than five hundred square feet, which is also why we're here today. So next slide, please. So this is a, uh, plot plan of the, um, proposed addition, so you can see that the farmer's porch. Uh, proposal is five feet deep by twenty-five, uh, point four feet, uh, twenty-five feet, four inches across. And that porch would be twenty, um. Twenty feet, seven inches off of the front lot, which is. Obviously, the non-conforming with that I'm applying for. Uh, you can also see that the house, the corner of the house on the left is twenty-five point seven. The proposed addition on the left side of the home is thirty feet back, so that is in the, uh, setback. Uh, it is twenty point, uh, three off of the neighbor on the left. Uh, and I am thirty-four feet, five inches off of the back neighbor, so I'm in conformity with the setbacks for the addition. As you can see, I am, uh, removing the shed, and the reason why I'm removing the shed, so I can stay within the lot coverage of less than twenty percent, so I am, uh, meeting the nineteen point nine percent. Next slide, please. So this is a, uh, drawing of the first floor and the second floor, so, um. You'll see the garage is a twenty-four foot wide by twenty-two foot, five inch, uh, uh, length. Uh, and in the back of the garage, you'll see a hallway and a stairway that gets you up to the second floor above the garage. And that is, uh, seven foot, five inches wide, or I'm sorry, uh, deep by thirteen feet, eight inches wide. And then the sunroom, currently the sunroom is a three-season porch, it is not heated. I'm changing that porch to a fourteen foot by thirteen foot, uh, three inch, uh. Permanent four-season porch. Uh, next slide, please. So you'll see the, uh, proposed front elevation with the garage with the master suite above. And you also see the proposal for the, uh, entry porch, which is the farmer's porch. And there will be a new roof and also the windows are also new as well. Next slide. Uh, you'll see the proposed rear, uh, elevation with the addition on the right-hand side. And then you can see the proposed right side elevation and the proposed left side elevation with the transom windows. And then the next slide talks about the existing floor plan. So the existing floor plan is forty-three feet, two inches, uh, uh, from left to right. And it's twenty-four feet, uh, three inches front to back, so it is a total of a thousand forty-six square feet. The three-season porch is thirteen five by nine feet, six inches, which is another hundred and twenty-eight square feet. So I am adding an additional. Uh, with the garage, I'm adding five hundred and thirty-eight square feet above the garage. Um, I am adding a hundred and three square feet to the stairs and the hallway to, to go up to the base to. To up to the, uh, master bedroom. And then the. Uh, three-season porch is currently a hundred and twenty-eight square feet, I'm, I'm making it a hundred and eighty-five point five square feet. So if you add the three together, I'm adding eight hundred and twenty-six point five square feet. And then next slide. Is the existing elevations for the home, uh, that is the, uh, back on the left there, that's the back elevation. On the right, that is the front elevation. And then in the bottom left is the right side elevation and then the left side elevation. And that is all I have in my presentation, sir.
Okay, very good, uh, thank you very much for that, we will, um, close that portion of the public hearing and go to. Uh, public comment, if any, I. See only three members of the audience in attendance, so, um, I will just put this out there, if there's anyone who wishes to speak. In connection with this application, just kindly raise your hand. Uh, and we will recognize you and, um, just give your name and address for the record. Seeing no hands, going once, going twice. Uh, I will close the public comment section and we'll go into questions from the board and we'll begin with, uh, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. Um, I, I just had a question, it's, um. Significant in size compared to the structure that's there, so I really just wanted to focus on. The overall changes, uh, building materials on the exterior, is everything being changed over, um. To match in one way or another, what's. What's being proposed in the addition?
Yeah, so the current home, the, uh, windows are already changed over currently, because that's under the permit that I have right now. So the windows have already been changed over, the siding is going to be changed over, um, to the new, um. L P smart side siding, so will match the entire house, the existing house will match the addition. And it will be a brand-new roof for the entire house.
Okay, thank you, uh, I have no question, no further questions.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Moore, uh, Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, no, I, um. Checked out the lot, the neighborhood. Where it sits, what it looks like, I, I don't have any questions, thanks very much.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Swanton, uh, Mr. Chagrin.
I, I just had a couple of informational questions, um, just, just for me to get my hands around the size of the. The addition. It looks like the existing size of the house is somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh. Eleven, twelve hundred square feet, does that sound right?
Yeah, it's actually a little bit less than eleven hundred square feet.
And you're adding eight twenty-six, so you're going to. Two thousand square feet?
Um, so the, the three-season porch is, as I said, uh, is currently. A hundred and twenty-eight square feet, and I'm demoing that porch and making it a hundred and eighty-five square feet, so the net. Is roughly fifty-seven square feet, so I'm adding fifty-seven square feet there. I'm adding another hundred and three square feet for the stairway and the hallway in order. I'm adding another hundred and three square feet for the stairway and the hallway in order to get to the master suite upstairs, and then the, um, square footage of the garage, which is the master suite above it, is another five hundred and thirty-eight square feet. So that's six uh, roughly seven hundred square feet.
Seven hundred, seven hundred additional.
Yes.
Okay, great, that, thank you for clarifying that, I have no other questions.
Thank you.
All right, um, thank you, and, uh, Mr. uh, Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, can you just, uh, remind me, I can't can't find it on the plans, what is the extent of the extension of the non-conformity here? In the front.
The non-conformity is the front porch, so the house currently is in non-conforming status, it's at twenty-five point seven from the street, and it should be thirty, so the heart current house is already non-conforming. I'm gonna add a five-foot porch, which is gonna come five feet up from the house, so now the, uh, the front porch to the street will be at twenty point seven, twenty, uh, twenty feet, seven inches.
Okay. Thanks, and.
The rest of the addition is in the setbacks, there's no issues with this.
Right, right, right. And describe this, the, the farmer's porch to me, please.
Yeah, so it's a five-foot, uh, deep, uh, by twenty-five foot, four-inch, uh, width, and as you can see in the fourth slide, it shows the front elevation. Um, two more slides, there you go, so it's, it's going to cover, obviously, the front door, there's gonna be four pillars, um, and it's gonna cover the windows to the left and the windows to the right with an arched roof right above it, so it's gonna be a farmer's porch.
Got you, okay, I, I see, all right, thank you for that, uh, clarification.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Bennet, uh, I have no, um, further questions myself, so, uh, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to deliberations, and again, uh, this is an application for a special permit for non-conformities, um, so, uh, we will, uh, I'll just ask that our deliberations, uh, conform to the legal criteria that's laid out in the, um, staff report as well, um, so we'll start with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti, um, yeah, we've been looking at the, and it, it's kind of come up, I think, across other members' radar screen, was the size of the addition compared to what's there, so, you know, when we're considering special permits and considering size-scale massing between what's there and, and what's being proposed, um, so initially, that was a, that was a thought, a thought for me, but after going through, uh, the plans here and it explained, uh, seeing them, um, I, I, it looks to me to be really well-thought-out, a well-presented, um, aesthetically pleasing change, um, to this modest house to make it, um, much more or less modest, I said, for, for lack of a better term. Um, and, you know, that change i- is not going to be, um, in my mind, more substantially detrimental than what's, what's already there, uh, when considering size-scale amassing, given, um, you know, the the way that the layout works with the, the addition of the bedroom over, uh, the garage, it's just already gonna be utilizing a driveway that's there, so, uh, given that there's no new non-conformities, um, just the front porch, farmer's porch, uh, exacerbating one, uh, and I don't find it more detrimental the way it's laid out, um, given uh, the neighborhood and, uh, the proposal here, um, I can support it.
All right, thank you, um, Mr. Swanton.
Uh, I think Mr. Moore said it very well, I, I would just add that, you know, in looking around that particular neighborhood, I think, uh, there are other houses that have been expanded, maybe not exactly this way, but they've been expanded, um, and so I think it fits in, it's not more detrimental, and I can support this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swanton and, uh, Mr. Chagrin.
Uh, yes, I have to agree with Mr. Swanton in driving the neighborhood, there, there are other homes that, uh, obviously have been modified to, uh, to get to, uh, larger size, uh, this, this is not ending up being a, a monster house in that area, it, uh, uh, square footage, it actually fits in quite nicely, um, the, the only difference I'd see, I'd say is, uh, the garage is, uh, is now, uh, superior to the main house, it's not supporting it. Um, but with that said, I can still support it, um, I, I, I think the, uh, the encroachment on the front yard is, uh, is acceptable, and, uh, I, I, I would support approving the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chagrin and, uh, Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, my colleagues have said it well, I find that, uh, the, uh, the proposal here is thoughtful, tasteful, and, uh, and improves the, this structure, and I think it, uh, certainly is uh, compatible with the neighborhood and certainly is not detrimental in any way to the neighborhood uh, in terms of size or scale or massing, so I can approve this application.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, um, I agree, uh, I don't have anything, uh, additional to add, as, uh, I too can support it for those reasons that my colleagues have already said, uh, and stated, so I, um, I can go ahead and close the deliberation portion of the public hearing, and with that, I will ask for a motion to approve in second on the application for special permit for non-conformities on, uh, seventeen Goldsmith Drive.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, application, Z N C twenty-two dash nine, special permit for non-conformities for seventeen Goldsmith Drive.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, uh, for the motion, and seconded by Mr. Swanton calling the role in the special permit for non-conformities motion to approve. Uh, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that is five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, and the motion carries, and the application is approved, so, um, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Hannon, and good luck to you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, and have a good night.
Have a great night.
You too.
Uh, now, uh, getting into our last public hearing for the evening, this is the application of Stephen Martin, seven Sylvester Street. This is an application for not, a special permit for non-conformities, uh, to construct a two-story addition greater than five hundred square feet at the rear of a pre-existing non-conforming structure, uh, with that, we have presenting on behalf of the applicant, um, Mr. Steve Martin, uh, so, Mr. Martin, uh, you have the floor, and, uh, we invite you to go ahead and present, uh, your application to us.
Good evening, my name is Ron Laffley, I'm the architect for the project, I'm speaking for Karen and Steve this evening. Um, what you have before you is a pre-existing non-conforming site and structure, can you hear me?
We can, well, uh, welcome, Mr. Laffley, nice to see you, nice to hear you.
Um, the non-conform, the non-conforming aspects of a site is that the site has six thousand four hundred square feet, where ten thousand's required, it has eighty, uh, linear feet of frontage where ninety is required, and the structure, uh, front setback, uh, is, is twenty-five, and we have, um, I believe, uh, fourteen, uh, excuse me, eleven point, let me get the, let me look at the site plan here.
Yeah.
Eleven point six feet. What we're doing is rebuilding the front stairs and rotating them so that we're not going out to the street where there's some hazardous stairs there, we're actually putting a sidewalk parallel to the front of the house to go to a driveway where most people come in the house. We're also, uh, reclaiming the nice deck that's on the rear of the building and moving it to the left side, and where the deck was located, we're adding a seventeen feet, six inch by twenty-two feet addition. Uh, the ground floor addition is three hundred and eighty-five square feet, the existing ground floor is six hundred and forty-eight square feet. The second floor addition is slightly bigger because it's overlapping onto the Cape-style house, and, and that's roofline, there's a lining there, um, the second floor addition of the addition is four hundred and eighty-four square feet, and the existing house is three hundred and fifty-one square feet on the second floor. The total existing house is nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet, and the proposal would increase the size of the house to one thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight square feet. So, the addition is designed to, to meet all the setbacks, the height, um, everything that's required in this zone, including the relocation of, of the deck. The ground floor of the existing house will be opened up to have a larger kitchen and dining room, and the space to the rear addition will be a family room, so they can have gatherings at Christmas and, and Thanksgiving. The second floor has three tiny bedrooms currently, and we're putting a master bedroom suite above the uh, the living room, new living room addition, and dividing the three bedrooms up there into, uh, two bedrooms by increasing the dormer size along the street, and adding two, two, um, uh, bathrooms, um, on the second floor, one for the master bedroom suite and one for the, um, the two bedrooms. The other issue that we have in the house is the current stairs are extremely steep, uh, the more than forty-five degrees in angle, we're also doing a, a larger staircase where it has a seven-inch tread, I mean, seven-inch riser and ten-inch treads to, to make it easier to age in place. The whole purpose of the renovations is to stay in the house and have a little bit more space, so when the grandchildren start to come, they have someplace to, to go. And that's pretty much, uh, on the side view, shows the, the dimensions where, where we are striving to, to use, uh, we're two inches lower than the original ridge, and we're changing the texture of the back of the building to be uh, a texture that usually in New England, this area in New England is done where we have the front, will be clapboard, and the back will be cedar shingles, and a little roof over the, the, the atrium doors coming out to the existing deck as relocated. That's the simplest of the project.
All right, well, uh, thank you, Mr. Laffley, for, uh, your presentation for, um, for the Martins, and, uh, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and quickly go to, uh, public comment, since there are only, uh, two members in the, uh, in the audience, one of whom is, looks like Ms. Martin herself, I'll just ask anyone who wishes to speak in connection with the application for or against, or just in general, raise your hand and, uh, we will recognize you. Going, uh, once, going twice, seeing no hands, uh, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go right into questions, and we'll begin, uh, with, uh, questions from the board by, um, going to Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. Uh, so, actually, I, I just had a question, if, if you could help me clarify, and that's a good slide to start with, some of the, the ridge heights, the building heights, the mean heights, um, yeah, with the zoning maintenance, there was an eighteen point two foot height mentioned supplemental height data submitted on April sixth listed it a mean height of nineteen eleven, and this looks different with a, a proposed ridge that's lower than the original house, but it, it doesn't look lower in the, on the diagram, and in a diagram, isn't anything to go by, it's what the numbers say, so, I just wonder if you could clarify for me the heights.
Yes, um, the diagram that you see now on, on, on on the screen, uh, was asked to be produced to simplify the construction documents that was submitted for the permit, and this is based on the main of the zoning requirements, so I went along the guidelines of that, whereas the matrix that were, that you see was taken off of the site survey and the construction documents of the height of the rear of the building, that's the discrepancy between the two. It's not that we're changing the, the one drawing from the other, it's the description of, of how we were asked to, to define this, uh, is done, um, we're well under the twenty, well, under twenty feet when we're allowed to go to thirty-five feet, so.
Yeah, no issue on, on the, on the height being, I was just, I just wanted to be clear on the.
Yeah, the intent is to keep the, the new ridge two inches below the existing ridge, so you don't have a, a little peak peeking over the, the top of the building.
Okay, fair enough, uh, I don't have any other questions.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Moore, going to, uh, Mr. Swanton.
Uh, no questions for me, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Chagrin.
I, I had one question, uh, I think on the drawings, it showed the, uh, the existing front of the house has a, um, small entryway with a small roof over it, and then it looks like the proposed modification, it gets slightly bigger. Is it just getting wider, it's not coming out any further closer to the street?
It's not getting any closer, the stairs are being rotated, so that's even further away, but the, the, um, the shape of the roof is actually smaller, but it's taking up the width of the existing platform, the platform that you step out on to is not being changed.
Okay, it's just, all right, I see that. Yep, I see that in the prints now, okay, so you're going wider, so it's to the extent of the platform, but it's not coming out any closer to the street.
Correct.
Great, thank you, I have no other questions.
Very good, um, Mr. Bennet.
I have no questions.
I, um, I agree, uh, I, I have no further questions either, I think, uh, there were only just one or two, and believe they were addressed, uh, in the presentation, so, uh, we can close that portion of the public hearing and now go into deliberations. Uh, in deliberating, I just asked that we tailor our deliberations around the criteria for a special permit for non-conformities, and we'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti, um, the elevation existing and contrasting here, while a lot to look at at once is, is helpful when you can kind of go back and forth easily without having to change pages, so, um, I do like that format, but, um, that being said, um, despite it being a big change, um, I think it's been thoughtfully planned out, um, utilizing um, the, the backyard as it does and encasing an area that's already there. So, um, and looking at a special permit for non-conformities here, which is what we're required to do, first finding is there's no new non-conformity created, and there is not. Uh, secondly, um, we have to find that this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than pre-existing non-conforming uh, with respect to size, scale, and massing, and, and although, as I said, it's, uh, it is a big change, um, the big change is being made, I think, in the right area on the, on the property, so I do not find it more detrimental uh, to the neighborhood, and I can support this.
Very good, um, we'll go to, uh, Mr. Swanton on deliberations.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I mean, I, it is, it is a significant change, but it's as well pushed to the back as it can be, um, and there are other houses in the neighborhood with similar things, so I too can support this proposal.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Swanton, miss, um, uh, we'll go to, uh, Mr. Chagrin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I agree with my colleagues, um, al- although it is a sizable increase to this house, the the house was so small and modest to begin with, um, and as Mr. Swanton said, the area does have some other homes that have had similar-sized additions, even bigger, um, installed, and they look fine, and I, and I, I certainly agree, it won't be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, it's being done tastefully, and it was a great presentation, so I can support the application.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chagrin and Mr. Bennet.
Uh, I would concur with my, my colleagues, they stated it very well.
Very good, I, um, I agree and, uh, concur with, uh, with the rest of the board on this, and, and this was also a very clear presentation, so, uh, I wish to, uh, thank the, uh, the applicant and, uh, and Mr. Laffley for the presentation, um, so, without any further deliberations, let's close the deliberation portion of the public hearing, and I will now ask for a motion to approve in a second from the board.
Uh, this is Mr. Shag, and I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the application for a special permit, seven Sylvester Street, uh, dock at Z N C twenty-two dash ten.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, uh, motions made by Mr. Shaggin, and seconded by Mr. Swanton, uh, on the motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities, calling the role, uh, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmatives, the eyes have it, the motion carries, and this application is approved. Uh, thank you very much, uh, to, uh, uh, Mr. Laffley, and, uh, good luck to the Martins.
Thank you.
Okay, um, that concludes our, uh, public hearings, uh, and the public hearing business for the new report zoning board of appeals for this evening, uh, we will now close that portion of our uh, of our hearing and go into our business meeting, um, our business meeting, we simply have a, um, uh, proposal of our, um, minutes for approval, the, these are the minutes from our last hearing, three twenty-two, twenty-two, um, any members have any comments, changes, revisions, or clarifications?
I have one comment, this is Ken Swanton, I think I sent a note in, although I don't know, it's hard to remember everything that happens, but I, I was not at this meeting, and I think that when the minutes first came out, they indicated that I was at the meeting, but I was not. I was not at this meeting. And I think that when the minutes first came out, they indicated that I was at the meeting, but I was not at the meeting. So as long as the approved minutes reflect that I was not there, I'm fine.
You did send that note, I do recall seeing that.
Yeah, good, good, good.
Are you sure you weren't at the meeting though, Ken?
I was in California. I was enjoying myself. So I was good.
Much as he wanted to be.
No, much as I wanted to be.
I'm sure I'm sure Gretchen will make that make that notation and any other comments or questions or changes? All right, hearing not, sorry, did someone say something? All right, if we, if there's nothing else to revise, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of three twenty two, twenty two, and then we can take a quick vote and accept them. Very good.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Motion's made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Bennet on the motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of three twenty two, twenty two, calling the role on the motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
I love staying. I wasn't there.
All right, Mr. Shagman.
I was there. I vote yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
One, two, three. I'm going to vote yes. I wasn't there, but you know, it seemed like five minutes. For us to pass it, so.
I'll change it. I'll vote yes as well.
Okay.
You set the precedent there.
It seemed like, it seemed like, they seem like, they seem like delightful minutes.
They must be. All right.
Riveting meeting.
The motion carries, the eyes have it, the motion carries. Minutes are approved and thank you, Gretchen Joy, for for your work in keeping and preparing our minutes as always. So with that, we will go on to any updates from the chair or the planning director. I don't know, Andy, Andy, do you have any any updates for us? I know that we do have in our, we have this whole sort of preamble in the staff report that speaks to some of the the sort of formalization of of the the plan criteria. I know attorney needed had emailed the planning department with some concerns about creating, you know, an expectation and standardization. Maybe through the board's adoption of these standards as a regulation which would then get published and then we would simply, every applicant would be on notice to simply see the regulations for the criteria that every plan should conform to so that we don't get handwritten plans and other things. Whether is there anything that you wish to address us on or that we should take up?
No, thank you, Chair. Other than to say that we will do that sort of belt and suspenders, I would note that we added language to the zoning ordinance relatively recently, making it clear that the office would have a role in establishing the application forms and the requirements for submission materials that are attachments to that. So but we will certainly do the bells and suspenders approach, so to speak. Obviously, it's quite clear, folks, with the materials we pay, we post online. And we do have a lot of folks who are a few folks who are frequent the board. So we appreciate the suggestion and we'll definitely follow up on that. If the board members have any requests for additional information, let us know. We're just trying to make sure that there's a a good template for folks to follow when submitting materials so that we don't spend more time on something than that is necessary, nor does the board spend any time on something that isn't sort of a half big document. So you have all the information you need when you're taking up the matter.
Andy, I appreciate that. And I'm thinking, let, it would be great to sort of see that articulated standard because I, you know, I feel for the planning office and getting sort of disparate versions of different materials. You know, some inclusive, some exclusive of critical components that only have to kind of circle back and cycle back to the architects or to the engineers and get revised. And I just think it's a lot of extra work for you guys. I would certainly be very supportive and even, you know, help initiate whatever we could do as a board. Once you once you can kind of articulate what the criteria looks like, I think it would be something the board might want to consider in just publishing it as a regulation, putting it out there, and then it's a standard. And then honestly, it's simply a point to the standard to every applicant, you know, in terms of these licensed professionals. Please make sure that your plans conform to this standard and criteria so that we don't, you know, have to bounce you back to revise them because that's, that seems wasteful of your time. But I'll let you guys kind of cycle through this and then I just want to let you know where sort of my head was, though I think many of the members here might just, you know, my colleagues might just be hearing this for the first time. So we can take it up, you know, further at a later hearing, but I just want to kind of put that out there, stop streamlining the process of thinking.
That's great. Thank you, Chair. And one other thing I would note is that I attended yesterday and today the trial for the funeral home on High Street. It's not, we'll see from the judge hopefully in a couple of months, a decision issued in that trial, but but there's one more short portion of that happening tomorrow, but that was this week.
Okay, great. Just, I appreciate that and keep us posted. And thank you. And Caitlin, thank you for, and Gretchen, thank you for everything you guys do to support us in you know, in this work and and we'll start thinking about when we can get ourselves live and in person up at the senior center, you know, just as soon as we can organize that. But for now, I think that's it. I have no further updates and unless there's anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
That's kind of Mr. Moore.
All right, motion's made and seconded. And just, this is just a roll call, a voice call of I or N, all those in favor to adjourn, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any nays, any abstentions, any no votes? No, the eyes have it. Motion's carried and we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thanks, everyone.